Thank you, President Nettle. Heavenly Father God, we come to you this evening, giving you the praise and glory for this day, God, mindful of our mourners today, Heavenly Father, those that are real, those that are misplaced like that, empty chairs, our children, God, elders like that, all of our tribal members, God, ask that you just be with each of them and guide this council through our meeting tonight on behalf of the people of this nation, giving you the praise and glory for all that we have, Heavenly Father, and all that we look forward to, and those unborn and yet to come, asking this in Christ Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kimball. This time we'll have invocation.
Real call.
I'm sorry, real call.
Misty Nettle?
Here.
Jordan Canuho?
Here.
George Garda P. here. Carol Chapman?
Here.
Cynthia Butler?
Here.
Donna Hare?
Detective.
Jean Evans?
Here.
Sammy Kimball?
Here.
Okay, would you help us for him? Item number three, approval of the agenda.
We do have some changes, Madam President. We will be changing new business number two, discussion interaction on building sixty-four storm shelter, and moving that into executive session at number two, which will give discussion on committees, commissions, and boards at number one. And those are the changes that I know about.
Are there any other changes to the agenda? We're asking for if there was any other changes to the agenda.
President Nettle, I'll make a motion to approve what changes.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Vice President Canuho, second by Councilwoman Evans, all for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garda P.S. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aho.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number four, Pawnee Business Council travel requests and reports. Were there any travel requests? Hearing none, moving on to reports, any reports? Oh, yes, Vice President.
I don't have a travel request, but I do have a report. Both Treasure Chapman and myself attended the swearing-in, the investiture of Sarah E. Hill, on Friday, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, at three P.M. There in Tulsa, we were happy to be there and be in attendance with other tribal leaders that were there as well, it was a good occasion to be able to be in there and witness this swearing-in of this federal district judge, who's also a member of the Cherokee Nation, I believe, and so it was good to be there and participate in that, so I just wanted to give that report as well.
All right, thank you. And just to remind trial members that are watching too, we also wrote a letter of support for Mrs. Hill as well. Item number five, infrastructure project updates, we'll be presenting.
This is Chris, I apologize, Council, for not being there in person, I am traveling to my daughter's softball game, but in your packet you should have some information provided, just to give you some highlights, I was asked to present or to get prepared a RFP for the land use, so I'm working on that currently. The IHS project is coming along, we're at hundred percent plans, and we have a GNP, so we're working on getting review and approval by the IHS team that the project is good to move forward, and hope to have that done here within the next week or so. On the EDA project, I have been talking with a design team on trying to get some project costs, so I'm working with Amy Wilson on that portion, and then a lot of work's been going on, on the rep, energy projects and everything, and I know Alex is on here to give more in detailed depth on those, but those are kind of the highlights and things that's been going on here the last couple of weeks.
All right, thank you, Chris, is there any questions on the infrastructure project updates? I just have one question, though, you had mentioned about the IHS project being a hundred percent, is that, which project is that? In particular interest, I'm looking at the drive-through facility for the pharmacy, or the drive-through for the pharmacy.
So we're not doing the pharmacy, this is going to be the the drive-through garage for the vaccinations and everything, so we have a hundred percent plans that we're reviewing right now.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any comments on the infrastructure project update? Hearing none, we thank you for your time, Chris, and your ability to be here and provide these updates, you know, everything that's going on within this infrastructure project update, you know, come about from the plan that was proposed, and then now we're going on into this land project, so hopefully things, you know, run smoothly as this project has been going about, same with our energy and our behavioral health projects. Thank you for your work.
Yes, thank you, President Nettle, and just again, I'll rebut to that, too, that Alex will be on here and going more in detail on these different projects, and a project that we're looking forward to, too, is the Solvit Prize, where we can actually develop a specific energy plan, we have, you know, the infrastructure plan that the council had passed, this would get in more specific, the energy for the community, so hopefully we can get that, and I'll let Alex explain that in a little bit more detail.
All right, thank you, Chris. Next item we have is item number six, energy project updates.
Hi, good afternoon to everyone, Alex Hessinger here from Tribby Quint, it's an honor to be here and present an update on the different projects Tribby Quint has for the nation, thank you, Chris, for that, previous feedback on the different projects. I will jump into the broadband one first, Reconnect Three and Reconnect Four, among them both, it's fifty million dollars, to this moment, there are no release of funds, the reasons for that is, for Reconnect Three, we are waiting on a signatory release from OTO for the environmental one oh six section, we didn't meet with USDA today, and the bodies on their court, they will lead all the communication between USDA and OTO at this moment. For Reconnect Four, we have environmental clearance, as it's all on tribal jurisdiction, so the only signatory for that would be Pawnee TIPO, which we already received from the TIPO office a couple of weeks ago. When it comes to the documentation, we're a hundred percent there, I believe, the only thing that was missing was the opinion letter, and that was something that we've been working today with Brian and Attorney General Smith, I know that was sent today for revision. So that would wrap up the broadband aspect, as I said, we are still waiting for that one oh six section to clear. Jumping into the rural energy program, at this moment, does anybody have any question around the broadband, I'll pause there.
I have a question for you, Lyle, this is Sammy Kimball, I'd like to know.
Hi, Sammy.
Hi, I'd like to know what the plans are to engage with OTO, are we already in talks with them, I mean, what's our progress with them?
So, we have currently extinguished all forms of, we went through every single form of communication through our TIPO offices, we visited in person, I know Madam President also sent a communication president to president, and we have had no response at all, so from this point on, USDA will be leading the communication with OTO, given that we have already received the council resolution pass to be able to build their jurisdiction for this weekend project, so USDA will be leading any form of communication going on forward.
Very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just to follow up to that, just to follow up to that, has USDA given us a timeline as to when, you know, I know they're probably going to reach out to them, but do we have a timeline?
So they have reached out to them already, that's what we heard from our meeting today, we have no current timeline, unfortunately, but communication has been done between USDA and OTO, so we're just waiting on next steps from probably Washington, D.C. at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other question on the broadband before I jump into the rural energy pilot program?
I don't believe so, we're ready for the next update.
Okay, thank you, so I'll jump into the rep, the rep has been moving along, we have finalized already phase one, which was resource planning and stakeholder engagement, we are currently in phase number two. Phase number two is centered around community energy planning and capacity building, so we've been working diligently with the Housing Authority, and really developing community outreach strategies to, for a number of objectives, first of all, really is educating the community and engaging the community about what this project really entails, so we've been working with the housing to really identify events and put out a calendar where we can start kind of giving out flyers and information about this. Also, this project has a number of sensors, I believe it's a hundred and sixty, that have to be deployed at a household and a business level, at this moment, we count with probably sixty sensors that can be placed already between tribal buildings and houses, and we have the Energy Coordinator who has been working really hard to keep getting folks on board with this, so other than that, the Housing Authority has also launched with the coordinator a Facebook page and a website for this project, so we're really pushing hard to engage the community. Other aspects of this project is working with Indian Electric Cooperative, as you know, they are one of the partners for the project, they are bringing in-kind to the table, and through Jet Pollers, they've been really giving advice around sensor deployment and interconnection as they play that role. When it comes to the Pawnee Nation College, through Dr. Chavez Ramirez, we've been working to create a partnership with Northwest Indian Community College, as this institution will provide community solar certification for Pawnee tribal members that want to learn and become certified on solar development, this ties in later on to the construction of the five megawatts that we'll be working on, in which Chris mentioned, and now we can delve into that once I finish with the rep. So that's what the Pawnee Nation College is doing, we've also been working with the planning department within Pawnee, really, to understand the planning and procurement of the equipment and the professional services that are included in this project. Last but not least, to this project, there's an aspect of repurposing oil wells, as you have might heard, so we are even working with BIA, BLM, and this point on, we're working with Freedom, which has the operating lease over one of the wells that we're trying to repurpose to create geothermal energy, we have scientists from OU, as well as research assistants, that are going to be working on this three-year project. That is where we're at, at this moment, for the rural energy pilot program. When it comes to the, I'll stop there, sorry, is there any questions around the rep at this point? Okay, being none, I will just jump into the last project that we have currently with the nation, which is the ACP, unfortunately, the government has decided to pull funds for this project, so tribal nations across the country are no longer eligible for the seventy-five dollar subsidy that they could have used towards their broadband subscription, so we are closing that project currently with the nation, and we'll be looking to close out final reports in the upcoming weeks, so the ACP no longer will be going forward, and I heard that Congress is not going to release new funds for it. Those are the current projects we have with the nation, there are two projects, one that is, we are in the competition for, and which is Chris mentioned, it's called the Community Power Accelerator, which we received a letter of support a couple of months back from the PBC, this has allowed Tribby Quint to get into the competition, and now we are in phase number two, what this means is that we are fleshing out a business model and feasibility study for what it means to build a five megawatt within Pawnee Nation. We are planning to have a first draft of the business pitch and the business model for the council to revise before the end of the month. The final deadline for this competition is May thirtieth, so we will be looking for your feedback, comments, inputs, and your guidance on how to further build this project that makes sense for the nation. We have been in conversations with IEC, and trying to understand how that five megawatt will tie into the grid, as well as serve your anchor building, and as well serve tribal members as well, so we're fleshing out that business model, and we'll be sharing those details in the next week or so. The last project is the Solvit Prize, which is currently just in application process, we submitted it, and it would be potentially seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for energy planning, which will allow Pawnee Nation to develop a full energy plan going forward. Those are all the projects at the moment, I, sorry if I said too much, is there any questions at the moment, or any feedback, I'm happy to answer.
Does Council have any questions? I don't hear, I don't see any regarding that, but can you let us know the status of the Canoe? Any activity going on with Canoe, or are we just at a standstill waiting to see what happens with the company, or?
This, this, Chris, I can comment on that. So, as, I think it was last month, I can't remember when I gave the update, you know, right now, it's just a partnership, there's nothing going back and forth yet, they are working, I'm doing a presentation at the STEAM show, with bringing one of their vehicles there, but right now, the only thing that I've worked with them on is the EV chargers kind of locations, and they have a cost breakdown, other than that, we haven't moved forward with anything with them yet, and I, you know, I go back to the comments that Councilwoman Kimball mentioned, you know, of back and forth and everything, with the benefits, you know, for the nation, so right now, nothing has come out of that yet, they are, I have received a picture, if you will, of what a design of Pawnee Nation vehicle would look like, I received that late this afternoon, but we haven't made any purchases, there's nothing pending at the moment, so that's kind of where we're at right now with Canoe, they're starting to build vehicles, but I don't think there's anything right now that would be a beneficial use to Pawnee Nation at this time.
Thank you, Chris, yes, Councilwoman Kimball?
Thank you, I've been watching the news, Chris, this is Sammy Kimball, I've been watching the news and following this very closely, because I really don't want to expend any tribal money on a company that is sharing at one cent a share. They're very fragile right now, but I will say that yesterday's market news said that, I believe it was, there's a city outside of Oklahoma City that just awarded them thirteen million dollars to move some manufacturing over to them, so that's kind of hopeful for that company, but nonetheless, I mean, if they're still sharing at a penny or ten cents a share, really, it doesn't seem lucrative for us to invest in that, and also, another comment is, is that I thought that they were going to be bringing some type of employment to us, so I'd be anxious to hear what kind of employment that is to, for training and that type of thing for our people here, I mean, it's all well and good that, you know, your team wants to get all of this put in place, but we are still waiting to see what is the plan to employ our people and to get some training for them as well, so it's got to be, it's got to be a mutual relationship, and right now, I'm just seeing that they're kind of just, you know, hate to say it, but they're kind of just hanging in the air a little bit, so thanks for that, just be cautious, and I'm going to be watching them as well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kimball.
Yes, yeah, and just to respond to that, too, I take that to heart, you know, I don't, I don't see, you know, unless something happens, you know, miraculously in the next, you know, six months, I don't see this need to spend tribal funds for anything unless, you know, it comes from council, anything that comes through this partnership, it'll definitely go through council for any approval. And as far as, you're correct on the training and everything, you know, we initially, at the beginning, we had some talk with Pawnee Nation College, but I haven't seen anything in a while with that conversation, so.
Yeah, thank you so much, appreciate you.
Councilwoman Butler?
Thank you, President Nettle, I do have some comments, and I'm glad that Chris is on, still on the line, because I just read the end of his report over here, and there was some things that you had mentioned, developed requirements for grant proposals, and that have IDC, and then these are your continuing priorities, but are you guys working on something to take care of the compliance issues, it says overextending the in-kind on multiple grants, and then being overwhelmed with too many grants and projects, are you guys trying to develop something and seeing these types of issues, and will you be providing something for the executive office that will help them, or actually the planning office, correct, that goes over these and takes care of some of this stuff, but are you guys planning to create a document so that people can go buy those, and so whenever council comes with these types of projects, that they can have a guide as well? And I have a question after that, too.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, that was discussed with planning prior to everything, and, you know, not really having somebody in there at this point, we haven't created a document, you know, we did stress with our current consultants moving forward that it has to include administrative costs, it has to include, you know, IDC, and everything we've looked at moving forward, that has been a priority, I know Alex didn't mention, but they've looked at other grant possibilities.
I know Alex didn't mention, but they've looked at other grant possibilities with AG, and that was definitely in there for that, to recover those costs. But a document has not been created at this time that outlines what has to be needed as we're going after these grants.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's probably something that's really needed, so that you guys are identifying those issues, and so now we can correct them, you know, and we can get this stuff put in there. So, I do have another question, and thank you, Chris and Alex, for all of the reports on these projects that are going on. This is grant-related, and I didn't know when to bring it up, but I figured this would be the great opportunity to ask. Did we get funded for the ICBG grant that we went after for the water infrastructure for?
No.
We didn't? So, I have a question. So, then what are we going to do to cover our situation that we had for the reasoning in going after the grant? Is there a plan in place? Because, you know, we need the expansion of the, was it the lagoons that we applied for? So, we're going to need that, so are we looking at other infrastructure grants or some other things?
Yes, in fact, we're just talking about that with the Infrastructure Task Force. And also, real quick, we do have an SOP for grants that was written out by planning. It's a checklist of everything that has to be done pre, during, and post-grant award. So, we do have that.
Chris, do you have anything to add?
Yes, so the EDA grant is, will cover the wastewater and water. Again, we're, I'm working with an engineering firm to get some cost estimates to make sure, you know, everything looks legit, and then we can submit that to budget proposal for review and then submit it. It's a rolling grant. But also, we have a pending design fund from IHS, and I can't think of what those fundings were, but funding should be available this spring, so I can reach out to IHS to see where they are at with that design funds for the wastewater.
Yes, Councilwoman Kimball?
Yeah, I just have a comment, too. We receive weekly status reports, and I really appreciate knowing what funding we didn't receive and what funding we have received. So, we're not stuck here at a council meeting discussing something that we didn't get and how we're going to shore that up. It's important that we're all on the same page, we all know what we're doing, and it's not to micromanage. It's part of the business of this nation, and we are on a need-to-know basis for that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Chris? Yes, Treasure Chapman?
Yes, I will back up and go back to the Canoe discussion and the comments that were made on that and how shaky it is right now. I read the story, the very large story that was in the Tulsa World on Canoe, and at that time, the shares had not gone to one cent. But it is part of what we started out with, and included in that discussion was the purchase of several Canoe cars. And I'm just wondering, is that also placed on hold, or has anything? Where are we with the Canoe cars? Because if we cannot, or should not go forward with the generators because of the shakiness of the company, then we naturally should not proceed with purchasing a fleet of cars. So, I just wanted to bring that forward also because that would not be in the best interest of the tribe either.
So, just a quick comment on that. I don't remember the exact language in the agreement or partnership. I don't believe it gave a specific amount of vehicles, and I don't think there was a definite, said that we will purchase, or, again, I don't remember the exact language. But currently, they do not have anything that would meet our needs at this point in time.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we'll move to item number seven, Behavioral Health Facility Updates. Thank you, Chris and Alex.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. How are y'all doing? So, I submitted a report, so just to kind of give an update of what's been happening the last couple of weeks. To me, every day seems like it's progressing. I know last recent, if y'all drove by, we're starting to do a lot of development on the front entrance, which is technically the outpatient wing, but construction-wise, everything's going as planned financially and schedule-wise. So, we're moving along with that, and going into it as we get a little bit further, we're just now starting to kind of kick off, you know, the wish list, start looking at certain things that we wanted to start exploring, if there's any extra features that we want to add to the exterior wall, as well as having a nice monumental wall or interest sign at the entry. And then start looking on some features on the interior, which could include some of the artwork. So, we're still talking about internally. I know SAP's out right now, but we wanted to see if we want to partner with them and do art competition, allow the Pawnees and local artists to paint something to show off in the facility. Programmatic-wise, we're still, you know, analyzing the licensing aspect. A lot of that, you know, is a driving force as we get a little bit further in the programmatic side, as well as the staffing model. So, we're still going back and forth and navigating the psychiatric service versus the SUD services that we'll have at the clinic. So, as we get a little bit further with that, we'll have a little bit more information of that. Just kind of an update, we found out in March that it looks like the state of Oklahoma is doing away with the CON. I know previously, we got the CON for this facility, and just kind of give some back history to even solicit or talk about a project, you know, the state required you to kind of get the CON, and for other folks, it means certification of need, just to show that, hey, there is a need in our community, and there isn't no other provider or any other competition that, you know, is preventing us to move forward with this. So, we have to go through the state of just kind of showing that need. Found out that there is a representative out of Tulsa that's kind of leading this endeavor. It's House Bill 2330. If y'all get a chance, take a look at it. But it's just kind of moving away and getting rid of the bureaucratic barriers that some states face with the CON. So, just kind of talking to other folks that are in the behavioral health realm, it looks like it's going to be kind of favored on the pass. You know, previously, it's been brought to the table several years, but there was a caveat, where included nursing homes and always kind of got shot down. But this year, they removed the nursing home beds and just kind of looked at it from a psychiatric behavioral health aspect. So, now it kind of looks like it's going to be more favorable. If that's the case, you know, we're looking around August or whenever that bill passes, that would be inactive. It doesn't put us in jeopardy of any sort, so it's just, just kind of want to let you know what that looks like. So, outside of that, you know, once we get a little bit more on the licenses, you know, we're about 90% done with the staffing model. When we get that, we're going to, you know, engage with the college and making sure that they can start developing plan and help. We did some outreach to some of the universities, like OSU and OU, to kind of, you know, on the higher-end degrees, you know, they can support there. You know, we went, I know myself, President Laura May, we went to Self-Governance, that was a good conference. We got, at least for me, I got some information of what IHS was looking at on their EHR program because IHS is about 20 years behind on the EHR program, which is electronic health records. They were able to announce who they selected and what they're going to do in year 2025 moving forward on the implementation side of it. So, I kind of wanted to see what they were using and making sure, whatever we decide, if it's not that company, it is compatible to that software because we know we will get a lot of referrals with the clinic being across the streets and other tribes that utilize it. So, the good news is, I got to able to see who they were selecting, and at the same time, you know, got confirmation that, you know, as long as it's a certified EHR program, they're all compatible. So, that's benefit, gives us, you know, the flexibility of what would be best for us. Secondly, you know, got to meet some other consultants on the third-party billing and the staffing model. They work a lot heavily in Indian country, being rural. You know, we face, you know, a lot of hardships when it comes to employment, and they do a lot, at least on the healthcare, you know, referring folks to not only IHS clinics, but other health facilities that tribes operate. So, I got a lot of those resources to help us mitigate some of those risks that we might see. And that kind of just, you know, leads into kind of the community engagement. We're always engaging with that. I know with the health fair coming around, we want to make sure we have a booth set up. We were thinking of, kind of thinking of some names that we wanted to kind of have officially named this facility. You know, there's been some internal talks of what we wanted to name it, and just roughly, just going through that process, just thinking from a client perspective or a individual of, in a dire situation like that, looking for services, we thought it would be best just to kind of keep it somewhat broad. When they're in a drastic moment like that, they're probably just getting on Google and just trying to search something or getting referred out to a clinic. So, just something as simple as behavioral health, or Pawnee Nation Behavioral Health or Pawnee Nation Treatment. When those persons are at that lowest point and just trying to find access of care, you know, that thing pops up, and it's just easy from a marketing standpoint. And for, you know, a person that's just going through that process, it kind of pops up. Thought it'd be clever just to kind of have a list of names during the health fair, you know, see what the folks thought in the community, what they liked. So, we haven't really thought of anything, just kind of roughly outlined, that's kind of what we thought, just kind of keep it simple so folks could easily Google it, because, you know, I thought of a Pawnee word, but, you know, me, myself, with the GM, I still have a hard time pronouncing the GM name. But when a person is in this scenario, you want to kind of just make it easier so it's easy to find, and we can make sure that they get quick and adequate care in that scenario. And then, you know, we, lastly, last couple of weeks, we did submit two IHS grants, which totals up to about $430,000 as we continue moving forward, like we talked about in the past, is we're always engaging, researching, just as funding opportunities come up, we're always shooting to apply for them. So, we did go after two grants, and one is for medical equipment, and then secondly, is kind of the purchasing for the generators. And so, you know, combining those two, it could be a cost savings of $430,000. And then, just, you know, on the backend, continually working with the bank, making sure we get our payment applications in process. So, we completed our fourth one just yesterday. We completed our fifth one. I know it says in process, but when I submitted, we were, but we were able to finalize that, and, you know, just working with EDA on the reimbursement side of it, that's a whole nother process and a whole nother application that they require, so getting those in so we can make sure that we get our reimbursement from them. But that's kind of just an overview of everything in a nutshell, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
You kind of, I have a question.
Vice President.
I'm sorry.
Vice President.
Go ahead.
It's going to be a quick one. What was that House Bill number again that you mentioned about the CON?
2330.
2330.
2330.
And it's, it's Representative Boatman out of Tulsa is the author of that bill. I got it. I will forward it to Council, just so you have it, but I'll forward it to you from later this evening so you can have it. And then, now, just again, we had, you know, a representative, a consultant that helped us with our CON. She did meet with Boatman and another representative from Oklahoma, just kind of help understand this process, and not only, because she has a clinic that she's doing south of Tulsa and how this impacts them from a competitive standpoint.
Okay. Councilwoman Kimball, if you have a question?
Yeah, thanks.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. You just lost me on that CON thing and the state changing that, so are we, I don't get it. So, can you just simplify that and dumb it down a little bit so I can understand, please?
Yeah, just, if the CON goes away, I mean, it's just, you know.
The certificate of need is going to go away, and then what happens?
It's just, it's just nothing really on our end. It's just bureaucratic steps that we have to go through the state of Oklahoma for approval.
So, it just goes away, and we don't have to worry about that anymore?
Yes.
Not only that, we don't have to pay the $30,000.
Thank you.
And we're not obligated to the timeline.
Thank you. Okay. So, we're going to save 30. Okay.
Yeah, the first time we had a CON, it expired. We had to pay additional to, yes, that's how it affects us.
And it gives us a little bit of flexibility on our construction because they only give you 18 months to build, so if they do away with it, we're not tied to the red tape.
Yeah, I just didn't understand where you were going with that. Thank you.
Okay. My fault.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item number eight. Thank you, Brian. Move on to item number eight, new business. Item number one, land and property committee recommendation. Item A, discussion and/or action on Pawnee Indian Veterans' exclusive use for the Pawnee Nation facilities for homecoming.
Donna, do you want, Donna, do you want to take this, or do you want me to take it?
You know what? How, do you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Why don't you go ahead? Okay. I'll go ahead and you jump in when you need to, okay?
All righty.
Okay. So, Sammy actually chaired this committee meeting for me, and it was approved, this request was approved in March, March 27th meeting. The thing that we need to do with this is to identify which facilities, because they're not really identified in the minutes, and they're not identified here. So, I think it would be good if we just kind of spell that out. And Sammy, do you have anything to add?
No, it was just a unanimous vote of approval to allow the Pawnee veterans and all of the employee groups that are going to be involved in the homecoming to utilize the facilities as needed, but there was nothing specific outside of that.
I didn't know if we needed to, you know, specify the roundhouse when you start talking about programs, and that brings in more, doesn't it? But I think they're having their health fair and everything on the Wednesday this year, right?
Yeah.
Usually, it's on Thursday during homecoming.
Yes.
But, so that's up to Council if you want to go ahead and define which buildings that were allowing the use for, exclusive use.
I would like to say, I remember in that meeting that we did discuss facilities, and that if there was a death in the family, that this would be the allocated building.
That's right.
And the roundhouse would be exclusive to.
Well, Rome, actually, Rome Chief was the designated building.
Yeah, right, Rome Chief, yeah.
If there was a death during that time, that it would revert over to Rome Chief, and I'm looking at my notes now, and that was actually approved. Monty Matlock was the one that made the motion, and Deb Akahock seconded that, and it was passed.
So, do we want to name?
If you could put that in our minutes, please.
In your property committee meeting minutes?
Yes, yes. That was our property committee meeting.
And then, so, right, I mean, that's the discussion on the recommendation from the land and property committee?
That's right.
Does anybody have any questions?
That's right.
If not, then I'll entertain a motion. I mean, whatever your recommendation is to identify, it sounds like what we're doing is.
Oh, I can take that, Misty.
Letting the Pawnee Nation have exclusive use of the buildings during homecoming and designating Rome Chief as the, or for exclusive use, should there be a death in the tribe?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, that calendar should be blocked for Rome Chief, for anybody having reunions or whatever, that that not be utilized in interesting cases.
Okay.
So, I would make a recommendation to vote on that. I'll make a motion. Do I make a motion?
Make the motion.
So, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the Pawnee Indian Veterans' exclusive use for the Pawnee Nation facility of the roundhouse for the homecoming and other facilities as required.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, President.
Yes, Vice President.
It was about maybe a month, a couple of months ago, maybe, we had a joint meeting with, or in a shared council, and this was one of the items that was discussed, was allowing the veterans to have exclusive use of the facilities here at the nation. use of the facilities here at the nation. Obviously, because of the moving the homecoming from the football field over to our tribal reserve, it has created some new, some new, I guess, obstacles, I guess, if you will, to navigate through while they utilize that facility during homecoming weekend. Unfortunately, last year, we had a death in our tribe who was not only a past president of the veterans committee, but also a past chief and also a veteran himself. And that caused some issues. And that's the reason why this request is coming up, to my understanding. So I acknowledge to the chiefs at the time and I expressed to them that when this comes to us, that I'll express the same thing, that they wouldn't be hearing it through the grapevine or anything like that. But I've always been just told, and this was something that I've been told from my dad, who's worked for the nation twenty-plus years as law enforcement, that when there's a death in the tribe, the family has the priority of what facility they would want to use. And I've expressed too that our veterans, in my opinion, you know, we honor them and everything like that and I do. But also too, in the same sense, are also that role of a servant to the tribe as well. That's why they get up every time they have a dance and stuff, get things prepared and do the work that they do for our people and for our veterans as well in that. And so I'm a no to allowing them to have exclusive use for the roundhouse for that purpose because I look at the families going through that time of needing to use a facility that they would like to use. And I don't want to be a person, or I don't want to have a say in expressing you don't have exclusive use of this facility here because it's already been designated for something else. We would do that with the family who may have a reservation for the Rome Chief. And if a person passes away, we notify the family and let them know this building is going to be utilized for this grieving family at this time for the funeral and those kinds of things, to my understanding. And so that's where I stand on it and that's why I'll be voting no on this because I again want to consider our tribal members that are going through that difficult time. One of the things they don't need to be told while they're trying to make arrangements is no, as much as possible. And so that's where I stand on that. So I just want to express that much this evening. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Does anyone else have any comments? Secretary Gardapi.
I just wanted to say that I understand your point. And this is a hard subject, but I don't want to see what happened last year happen again. So I'm in favor of giving the veterans that exclusive use of the roundhouse just on this occasion so that we don't have anything like this happen again. And I think it's a good idea to designate a place for the families to bury their loved ones, just for the specific reason that we don't need to have what happened last year happen again. And I was hoping the chiefs could come up with the answer for us, but I realize that that's, this is just a difficult subject. So I appreciate you guys thinking long and hard about this subject, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Secretary Gardapi. Do you know their comments will call for the vote?
If I could, just a second. I just having our head to Soto here. Can I ask your thoughts on this?
You know, like George said, it was a, it was a hard, hard decision. We maybe what, two or three meetings that we had discussed all this. And, you know, there's different scenarios that could come up. You know, one thing that was brought up was, well, what if there's two deaths? What if there's three families in mourning? Then what? You know, I know one place was here that we could utilize as well, here and there, you know. But, you know, I agree with George, you know, it was pretty hard last year. You know, I was, myself personally, I was stuck right in the middle of it. And it wasn't a very good time. Everybody else had a good time, but as far as me personally, I was right in the middle of it all. And it wasn't, it wasn't good, you know. And I don't want to be in that situation again, you know. So my personal feeling is let them have it, let them use it. That's where I stand at.
Well, if I could, I, you know, I've struggled over this and I understand the arguments on each side. I also feel like that there needs to be guidance. You know, we want to be the leaders and sometimes that means we have to make the hard decisions that will help those in the future to make things work well. You know, I think it's rough to put it on the veterans themselves when they're put in these spots. I think it's best if we have a plan that we can, that we can fall back on, you know. And the last thing is I hate to make that. I don't want it to be that way, but I just feel like we have a future that is, we're a family, you know, tribe-wise. And we get that, this one time where we bring so much of our family together. And it's, and it is so important. And I think it's got to be protected and it has to be treated as the special thing that it is. So that is my thoughts.
Councilwoman here.
Yes, thank you. So I'm really torn on this because what Jordan said is true. I worked for the tribe for decades and we gave the families priority. I know what happened last year really was difficult on a lot of people involved. And yeah, and it was a unique situation with the three leadership roles he had, you know. And with my camp, what we did was we took that opportunity to tell our children and grandchildren why we weren't dancing and, you know, and how he revered, you know, stopping the drum and how he believed so strongly in that. And so one issue that could happen is if the dance is allowed to happen, I mean, when the dance is going on there, and if a family wants to use it, it could be really disruptive for them, you know, in that setting. So, yeah, I'm, I am really torn on this vote. And I just wanted to say that much.
Thank you, Councilwoman here. Anyone else? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
No.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
No.
Donna here?
No.
Donna, you're on mute if you're trying to talk.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Four, three, yes, is the final vote. Okay, that leads, that leads us to item number eight, number two, budget committee recommendations.
Yes, the budget committee met and we just had one item. And this is the removal of the lead and asbestos from our old court building. And it, this had come to us before and the original dollar amount asked for was over a hundred and eight thousand to remove this. And we asked staff to go back and relook at it to try to get it down. They did do that and they have brought this back. It's very detailed with information from Zachary Simmons from Stronghold Construction. But the cost is now down to sixty-five thousand, sixty-five, three hundred and fifty-six dollars, sixty-five thousand and sixty-nine cents. And this will be taken from the BIA, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, ARPA funds. Oh, yes, and we are going to be training the terror workers also, I forgot to mention that, which is really good that they're going to learn how to acquire the skill. So that's why we approved it in budget.
Does anybody have any questions for Treasure Chapman? Yes, Councilwoman Butler.
You said BIA, ARPA. Which budget is that? They have several, we have several. Is it just A tribal government? Is it tribal court?
Which one is it, Brian?
Forty-two oh eight, what's that, A tribal government? Thank you. I just want us to be more specific because we have a lot of BIA budgets and so it would be more beneficial just to say which budget. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the GMP for the lead and asbestos removal. And that's in the amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I'll second.
Who made the motion?
I did. I did.
Treasure Chapman and seconded by Councilwoman Butler. With no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna here?
Aho.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number B, discussion and our action on Pawnee Chamber of Commerce membership. Treasure Chapman, did you want to?
Go ahead, go ahead.
See, Councilwoman Butler, you're more familiar with the chamber. I am not. I personally though, thought that didn't, isn't the business one seventy-five versus one thousand?
No, the business one, that's the first year, the first year. Business is actually a hundred and thirty annually, yes. But we're into our second year, maybe, I think, of membership. So we wouldn't get the seventy-five dollars for this year if we chose that. I think what I was told today that our membership right now is the thousand dollars, which is the platinum. I will mention that in looking at our bylaws and looking at the benefits and looking at what these levels are, we have some revising to do. And we've already talked about it in our meetings. We have a meeting next week where we're going to actually kind of define what the benefits are of being a member of the chamber. Because right here, we, you know, I brought some things up and I'm just going to throw it out there, not to throw our business out there with the chamber, but we don't follow our bylaws. And that's what was one of the things that I told them. I said, we don't even give people votes because we weren't at the table for votes. I think it was just the voting body, or not the voting body, it was the nominating committee who nominated all of the directors. And then, you know, they just went out and solicited businesses who wanted to be a director. And they said yes or no, and then we went and everybody got installed in January. So it wasn't even following our bylaws. So whenever I was chosen as the president, I mentioned that to them when we were looking at some changes in the bylaws. So that's something that we're probably going to revise because we don't even follow it. And they haven't followed it for years, from what I understand. So it's not, we're not really given those votes. They're just making those decisions, you know, based on people who want to participate and who want to be involved. So this will change. So it just depends on what you guys want to do. They said that the nation did the thousand dollars annually, which also includes being put on the website. So there should be some links on the website, which Pawnee Nation's not on there. Because I went and checked to see if that was, that was happening. But we have a new manager, she's learning how to do all this stuff. She's only been here for, since February, I think. So a lot of the things that are being offered need to be reminded that, hey, we need to get back on to doing what's going on. So that's what I'm tasked with in dealing with all of the chamber stuff. But we're also given a banner. We get to be advertised on social media, on the website. So they do push out our flyers and everything for all of our events that go on, all of the things that are going on with the Pawnee Nation and other businesses. And then we're supposed to be displaying our banners at all the chamber events, which I haven't seen happening, but it'll, that'll change. So like I said, it's up to you guys on what you want to do on membership. You can either keep the thousand or we can go to the very basic of the hundred and thirty dollars that is annually. It's just, we won't get all of the exposure that we've been getting if we take it back down to just the business.
Questions for Councilwoman Butler?
It just, it just intrigues me that the nation isn't just, you know, isn't up there within the chamber and it just seems.
Which is going to change.
I know it. I know, that's why I'm really glad you're there. Because they're missing out and we're missing out. So it's kind of a mutual loss. So it's unfortunate. But I'm glad you're on it and I honestly don't have a problem with the thousand dollars. I think, you know, we need to be good business partners with the city and the county. Our children go to school there, we do business there, we have businesses there in town. So I would say I'm good with that. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question. Do you know, or can you give us a timeline when the bylaws will be revised? First one, and then second, so we're going to pay for 2024? And, you know, because according to this information that was, that was submitted to us and passed out to us, the voting occurs in January. However, you know, we didn't vote on anything this year. So should we? My question is, so should we pay for this year or wait till the bylaws are revised and then pay for 2025? Or I'm just throwing those things out.
If we don't pay for this year, then I don't qualify to be a part of what's going on. And hold, continue to hold the position. You have to be a member for, you know, and then for me being the chairperson of this committee, it would, that would go away.
Okay.
So it'd be beneficial if you guys want to see change and.
Good to know that. Okay.
And then bylaw change, we have it on our next agenda to start looking at some things for benefits and revising some more by bylaws. So that's forthcoming in the next couple of months.
Councilwoman here?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Kimball and I'm glad that we have a presence there and that Cynthia's there. And I'm very proud of Cynthia for serving in the role that she is serving. And I know that she'll get them to follow all the bylaws. That's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman here. If no further discussion, we'll call for the vote. Oh, do we need, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the thousand dollars for the membership.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Vice President, second by Councilwoman Kimball.
You said our deal wasn't on the website?
No, and because I was looking for it because I was looking at these things and, yeah, we don't even have a link or anything. But there are some pages missing, which I'm going to inquire about this week.
Can we get a discount on that?
Right, we're going to get a discount. We're going to get a lot of stuff put on there, I'm telling you.
Just trying, just trying.
I can't make that final decision, but it was up to me.
Okay, motion on the floor to approve the chamber membership for the platinum level for a thousand dollars. Vice President made the motion, second by Councilwoman Kimball, and now we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
I'll have to abstain because I also serve on that chamber. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Abstain.
Donna here?
Aho.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine is executive session. You have to make a motion to revise the agenda.
Yeah, shouldn't we do our open forum first?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We've got visitors.
We need to make a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to move the open forum up to number, uh, nine?
Oh, nine, yes.
And, uh, move the executive session down to ten so that we can allow for, um, our visitors and open forum. I would like to start, though, this evening in open forum, if you don't mind, President Nuttall. I just have, I just have a real quick, um, a follow-up. Uh, you'll recall that at our last couns-
Oh, Council, Councilman, we gotta...
Need a...
Oh, sorry.
I'll, I'll second her motion to make the, to amend.
And then if, uh, any other comments, questions? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Garder P. Yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, now we're in item number eight, open forum.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to go ahead and, and take the lead on this one. As you'll recall, in our, in our last council meeting, I, um, noted that the property committee, Sonny Evans in particular, brought up the idea that the Oklahoma Department of Transportation is auctioning four acres of land at the Simron Turnpike at South Three Forty-Nine Hundred Road, which is just directly east of the Wolf. There's four acres that they're auctioning. The question was, and that we presented to the Attorney General, was, is this actually tribal land?
Mm-hmm.
Was this actually part of eminent domain, uh, in order to build the four twelve? So the Attorney General did, uh, go out and, and he did, um, do some investigating and such. He worked with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And it, and it seems as though, um, the BIA confirmed that the property left trust status in nineteen-seventeen. The property was part of the Pawnee Reservation that was ceded to the United States in eighteen-ninety-three, and the nation did not retain any proprietary or government interest in the land. Consequently, there's no way from the record to determine whether it was forced fee patent. And, uh, so unfortunately, the nation has no enforceable proprietary or governmental interest in the subject property. So I just wanted to bring that forward, since I brought it out the last time, so our, um, nation's citizens know that we did investigate it. I did have several calls about it. You know, are we gonna take it back from the state? And unfortunately, that was ceded way back in, uh, nineteen-seventeen. So thank you very much. That's all I got.
Councilwoman Kimball, would you happen to know, um, what allotment that was? Was this...
It was, uh... Dang it, where's my report? Hmm. Bear with me. No, it doesn't. It just gives our, our, the current map. I'm sorry, I don't have that available. Oh, the original deed. It was, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Um, it was actually, um, John J. Jake heir to Susie Norman, a Pawnee Indian for, uh, west half of the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section Nine in Township Twenty North of Range Five, east of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma. So that's who, that belonged to, John Jake, the heir of Susie Norman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for open forum?
There was, there's a rule in the USDA that says that Congress is supposed to allow money in their budget yearly for tribes to purchase land back that are adjacent to or next to their, their land. They should get the first option. I just thought I'd let you know, if you were sort of buying it.
Certainly show up at that auction, see what we can do. We'll, I'll ask Attorney General, uh, Smith about that. We'll, we'll circle back. Donna? We'll talk about that tomorrow in property, but we'll circle back with AG Smith and see what we can do.
Sounds good.
Wouldn't hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone for open forum?
This is open forum, so you get to speak about what you want. We're gonna take this into executive session to discuss amongst ourselves.
Okay, with the reason why we're here in representation of the Pawnee seed preservation is because, um, we have a video clip too on YouTube of a council meeting back in twenty-nineteen that, um, Angela Thompson, at that time, made the motion to get, let the, uh, seed preservation have this storm cellar. And, uh, so it was adopted, and then Debbie went and the seeds, um, Preservation Society went in and cleared all the mud, all the sticks, the spiders, the bugs, the mold, all of that out of there. And then it's even painted by Ted Moore, beautiful murals, for the seed storage. And then, um, then when we got Jennifer, you know, you came and you didn't know about all the effort that went into it, and were concerned about the tornadoes. But, you know, that was already given it to us by the council, and so the council should be the one to take it away, not the property committee. And besides that, it's not very, um, elderly, ha, you know, eligible, I mean, what do they call that? Handicapped, accessible?
Handicap accessible, yes.
Yeah, and then the door isn't stable. I've been in tornado where I just had a hose in that door. That, that tornado will blow that off. And, um, I could, it was like Tiger Road, anyway, but, and then the reason the Pawnees picked this land here is because of this hill and these rivers and those tornadoes. They've always gone around our land for that reason. And, you know, because of our, our natural heritage, we should not be that afraid of the storms and things like that. And I can't remember when, you know, I was over there in Cottage Sixty-Six in ninety-three, ninety-two. All there were just a bunch of winds, but the only tornado that's ever come has been out west or over the high school. And there's other storage, I mean, cellars, like the old IHS, the new IHS, um, down, downtown courthouse. And then this public school has built a shelter. And then we have other recommendations on this paper that FEMA has available. So that's why we're here, to humbly ask you to let us store the seeds there. It's hard to store them in the roundhouse, and we're trying to preserve them, you know. Someday, the way this world is, we may need to plant those seeds. So we're trying to get an inventory built up and make our own food, you know, to, uh, have a nice place, uh, environmental place to store them.
Thank you, Denise. So tribal, the, the big picture is tribal nations who are able to grow their own food are able to foster healthier communities and stronger future generations of native people. What are we doing for food sovereignty? What are we doing for food self-determination as a whole? I know that we've had, uh, some general miscommunications, I would say, more than communicating, on this subject. We had, uh, Native American Rights Fund come in when we were concerned about the legal protection of our Pawnee seeds. And, uh, um, that's the starting point there, you know. We, we need to sit down and ask ourselves, is having our ancestral food important? Is being able to determine food self-determination important? And if it is, what steps do we make to feed ourselves, you know? We were real happy today at our seed office. We got to listen in, uh, with the rickaros talking about how they're going to produce two million pounds of food this spring, you know, in the projects they have. You know, and that, that's just amazing, you know, what happens when people that, that work with their ancestral seeds, work with their government, work with the organizations, work with the farmers' markets, they all work together. And that's what they're projecting right now. When they pull the energy projects together and work on the gardens, uh, like the rickaros are going to do, they're, they're, they're forecasting they should be able to produce fifteen million pounds of food with that project. The energy projects. We're working on an energy project, uh, with the Pawnee Nation College, OU, uh, people in the villages of Oaxaca, Mexico. And we're gonna pull the energy from the sun or from the wind. We don't quite know yet which. Um, but we're going to combine the, that power with saving the energy and also using it for gardening, like the rickaros. They're, they're pulling their natural gas to make their facilities that they're talking about. And they're, they're beautiful facilities. I, I'm sure you already know about all that. I'm probably just, you know, um, talking to the wind here. But I, I, I really feel like it's important, you know, bottom line. You know, we need a place that is dry, that is dark, and that is cool. And that's this cache. You know, one time I was corrected at a chief's meeting when I called it an underground, or when I called it the storm shelter. They said, don't call it that anymore. They gave it to you guys. It's, call it the seed cache. So that's what we're calling it. You know, when it's just a simple walk across the street to where there's three rooms that's been built specifically for storms, why not use that? Is it because you don't have a key to the building? Or, I don't understand that. It's, it's handicap accessible at that building. There's lights. You know, you won't, you'll go down those scary steps, and in a storm, they will be scary. I can guarantee you that. And you won't have lights. You won't even have a place to pee, you know. There's, that's, that's what the, just a few more steps. You could have had that, you know, if you just went to the elder building. And, you know, that has more room in those three rooms combined than what's in the cellar. And, uh, I, I know there's a lot of good weather forecasters out there that can project when a storm's coming. Are you going to force the employees to stay during that time, or are you gonna allow them to go home? To be with their family, you know, to go to the shelter of their choosing, you know, one that has lights? I, I just, um, encourage you to think about these things, you know. That building's very old. We were trying to figure out how old it was. Because we know that when the, the murders took place next door, that was in the fifties. And that was kind of signaling the end of using that storm shelter. In fact, when our elders here were little girls, um, you know, they ended up shutting down the storm sh- shelter. You know, it was, it was, uh, nobody wanted to go down there just because of the Noah Noahs. The things you have to do to cedar the places off, you know, to lead the spirits away. But, um, yeah, we, you know what? When we cleaned out that cellar, nobody told us that we should have had a hazmat crew come in and do it for us. We, we cleaned it out with all that black mold and everything, you know. It took six months. We kept going in. They're still there. It took six months for IHS to say, okay, now you can paint it. You know, so we put ourselves at risk even for doing that, I imagine. You know, maybe that's partly why three of our people in our society have cancer. I don't know. Nobody knows. But, uh, anyway, it's a, it's a beautiful shelter. I love it. We've had our Wichita's come up. They, they love using it. You know, we meet there. They want to meet inside the root, inside the seed cellar when they come. They, they want to put some of their images up on the wall, you know, and, because we share seeds. You know, we share seeds with our, our rickaros and the Wichita. And, uh, so, you know, to have a nice, cool, dry, dark place is, is wonderful. We did have plans to, to spruce it up, and, um, Jennifer could tell you her reasons probably why. She didn't want to have a solar paneling for our lighting, our LED, LED lighting and, um, for the power, for the, um, dehumidifiers and to keep it dry and, um, all that. Uh, you know, we definitely had to have powers charge up our cell phones. And then we, we also had, well, we still have the, um, I had to give back the solar paneling because she said no. But I do still have the vents to put on top, because otherwise there's two big holes on, on the roof. And, uh, so, yeah, um, we, if we can keep this seed cache and be given permission to do those few things to spruce it up, make it even better. Yeah, you know, we'd like to throw paneling there, and then Pat's crew won't have to worry about rolling over the electric cord when we have to plug in. They've done that three times. That's what, uh, encouraged us to get solar paneling. Um, but isn't solar paneling, isn't ener-, clean energy something we're interested in?
Yes, uh, Deb, is, is there anyone else?
Anyway.
In the interest of time and make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak.
My name's Sherry Talek.
Good evening.
I presently live in St. Louis. I am transitioning down here to Pawnee. Uh, I heard today we were having this meeting because they were thinking that they might have to give up that cellar. I, 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 I am in awe at my cousin here because of what she's done with the seeds. And, um, I was on the, uh, committee when we were, uh, planning the elder building. And I remember that those bathrooms were made into safe rooms. And I have personally been in Pawnee when we've had severe weather with tornado warnings. Me and my twin brother in that handicapped silver van. We don't have a shelter out two miles south of the house, but I came into town, I drove up here, uh, uh, by the roundhouse. So just to stay as safe as I could, I pulled under the, uh, the cover on the east side of the roundhouse, even though I knew there were safe rooms, safe rooms in the, that elder building. I've never seen those rooms open when we have severe weather. But like I said, I live in St. Louis. I'm down here often. I come down here to Pawnee Pow Wow. I have helped Debbie in many, many... I have helped Debbie in many, many projects and with the seed. And if you'll just give me a little bit of time, I'll tell you a real funny story real quick. About four months ago, I was in a thrift store in St. Louis, and I was just moseying around, and this guy was tending the store, he's the owner of the thrift store. He happened to mention that his wife was a food scientist, and I said, "Oh, yeah?" I said, "What does she do?" She said, "Right now, they're working on a project to try to modify the corn plant so that it'll grow like a bush." I said, "Why do they want to do that?" They said, "Because when the wind comes and knocks the corn down, it stops it from growing." And I started chuckling because I thought, "Wow, isn't that interesting? They want us to eat GMO corn just because they want to produce a kind of crop that doesn't get damaged so they can make more money off of it?" And I told the guy, I said, "Well, you know what? I said, "I'm from the Pawnee Nation, and you know what we used to do for our corn so that we could protect it from the wind?" I said, "We planted sunflower seeds all around the perimeter of the gardens so that the wind would protect the corn, the sunflowers would protect the corn." He was blown away by it, and he said, "Oh, my gosh, I got to tell my wife that." And I said, "Yeah, please do, please do. See how far ahead we are, and see how we are protecting our healthy food, bringing our heirloom seeds back, heirloom seeds back. We need things like the seed cache so that we can protect it as we produce more seeds and stuff. It's very important. Let's utilize the facilities that were made for safe, keeping people safe, but they need to be open when there's storms." That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else for open forum?
I have a language class I got to get. I just want to know why, what's the reasoning, why do you need the storm shelter? And I'm talking to, I guess it's Jennifer Gover, is she here? Why? I wanted it written, why do you need it? And we've had, you don't have to answer me right now, I want it out in writing, but I also want to know, seems Pawnee Nation has not been very accommodating to the Pawnee seed preservation. I mean, there are so many states, Nebraska, Kansas, Oklahoma, all these farmers that are helping the Pawnee seed preservation with our native seeds, and I can't not believe you can't see that. I can't believe it. I am appalled, and I want it in writing, why you need that cellar. Thank you.
Top disaster, everybody. Has a lot of emotion right there. After Sunday, I'm going to put it like this, Gitga hockey dance, it was beautiful, it was good, ceremony, doings, our people. The mention of the name, the donation of the corn that was used. Seed program, thank you for your donation, seed program. Food was wonderful, and if I could say anything, someone who understands taking care of our mother corn that we partook of, that was our mother corn that we ate, and we didn't speak about that, and no one can. The only one that could is right here, or as I am right now, or anyone from the seed preservation society that has taken the time to grow corn, or the chiefs, anyone in the tribal community that has taken this time, because it's in their heart somewhere, because they understand that this is our ancestral corn, the meaning of it, the purpose of it, the Gitga hockey dance. Think of our betas that partook in this, you know, with their with that da'wah jocke Then they turned around and went to this mother corn, back and forth, that power of this corn, the significance of it being a mother, a woman. This is your women, your keeper of the seeds here, with all of her helping hands, seed preservation, and it's right. States, other states, communities will work with the seed preservation society and Debbie Echahuck, keeper of the seeds for the Pawnee Nation. I've sat in the back, listening, watching, taking everything in, praying about it at that, praying about it, and it's almost, almost like a personal vendetta, and I sure hate to say that, but it feels, feels like that. There's a source that we need to get down to the bottom in this miscommunication and lack thereof, the simplicity of it, if we could have communicated directly, and that's something we need to do together, because you said it, Dr. Evans, is it? We're all relatives, all of us, relying upon one another, and I'll be honest, through this whole ceremony, we talked about the corn. Yes, we did. In fact, I told my aunt, because she said, "You should have brought something. Don't come in the hand event, it's getting chewed out." I said, "You know, I harvested this mother corn that we're getting ready to partake of, everyone else that did it, we did that, so you could eat it and partake, and it was cooked and served for our people, for this ceremony, for this way of life." That's significant right there. So in finding a proper cache, if you will, to be able to do this and work collectively together, cohesively, as families should, sit down at the table together, let's figure this out, why, let's pray about it. I ask that our chiefs come together. In fact, I ask that we use and utilize our ceremony, and we come together and we learn and use this. Why, why is the significance of our corn? Why should we support it? What are the nutrients? Why did, why? Why was this mother corn in our bundles? Why do we not teach about it? That's my thoughts. And it was almost like a slap in the face on a moment where the corn suit fell on the And I know after saying seed blessing prayer, I said, "You don't want to leave any corn behind, no seed left behind. It's how significant." And that suit fell, it was a sickening feeling, because you think about the efforts of your harvest, everyone together and doing this, taking that part, and then cooking, and all the prayers that go into it, you know? But they could also say, "Our ancestors are hungry too," you know? It's okay, feed the spirits, it's good. See it that way, too. There's many ways to look at it, I say. Just want to work together, make it good for all of us, because that's the way it should be. Noah, Edie, Hope.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other comments for open forum?
This is Jen, can I just make a comment real quick? I wanted to thank you all for being here, and I wanted to make sure everybody understood, and given a background to the council. In 2019, the PBC did give this permission to the seed preservation society, and when I came aboard, I was concerned about the safety for employees in case there was a storm. So I went to the property committee, and I asked, "Hey, I would like to have, make sure that this is used as an emergency shelter." As executive director, I'm responsible for all staff in the building, so in case there's an emergency, it was nothing against the seed program or the seeds, it was just pure safety. And so the property committee said, "You know what? This is an administrative item, let's let the ED handle this, and whatever she decides with Deb, we'll go with that." So Deb and I talked, and we agreed, "You know what? You can leave some stuff in there, but as long as we can get employees down there in case there's an emergency, I'm good. Just make sure that there's no lock on there, and we're good." And that's how we left it. Now that, now that we have a new property director, you know, he needed some guidance on this of, "Okay, so what's the what?" So that's why it's on the agenda, because the PBC has final say, you know, you're right, over the property committee. So we brought it back here, and mine's just purely over safety, making sure we have something that staff can go to, and that's really the overview of it. Any questions?
Secretary Gardippe.
Have we ever gotten an estimate on capacity for employees to be in there as a storm shelter?
I know I talked with John about that. I'll find out. He's our fire marshal, so he's going around looking at all of the shelters that we have and doing inspections.
Any other questions? Any other questions, council? If not, we thank you for your comments, and, you know, those will be considered in the discussion in executive session, and that's, you know, what prompted it to come to this board is because of the back and forth, you know, you presented the information, and then that will be looked into as, well, that document or that video that was uploaded on YouTube, we have the minutes, you know, that were provided in our packet that we will look into, and we'll go from there. And that's, you know, that's all we can do is, like I said, bring the information to us, you know, make the decision, and then move forward. I mean, because, you know, without it, we've been going back and forth, and so tonight we'll hope to get some resolution. Hearing no further comments, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilwoman Butler, seconded by Vice President. No further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Gordon Cunho.
Yes.
Director of PPS, Carol Chapman.
Yes.
Cynthia Butler.
Yes.
Donna Hare.
Yes.
Dean Evans.
Yes.
Sammy Kimball.
Yes.
Like, that's harder, because you can't fit everyone.
Like, because that's harder, because you can't fit everyone.
It's 8:37. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll second.
Put a motion on floor at second. Call for the vote, please.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Carter, P.S., Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aha.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, on item number one. My agenda go. Discussion on committees, commissions, and boards. There is no action. It was discussion only. On executive session, item number two, discussion and/or action on building 64 storm shelter. It was decided to create an addendum to the existing lease and add the seller for the amount of 250 a month through 12/31/2024, which will extend the existing lease by six months. That was the consensus of the council. I'll entertain a motion for that action.
I'll make that motion.
Put a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Kimball. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Butler. No further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Carter, P.S., Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aha.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item number 10, we have, oh, oh, sorry, I moved that. Item number, would this be 12? Set the meet, next meeting date in accordance with our how we've been doing our council meetings with the first and the third Tuesdays of the month. The next council meeting is May the 7th at 5:30. Does anybody have any conflicts or anything? Are we good with May the 7th?
I'm good.
Hearing now, the next meeting date has been set for May the 7th at 5:30. That moves us to the next item on the agenda, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Got a motion by Vice President Canuho, second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Butler. Call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Carter, P.S., Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Aha.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, council, for your attendance. Thank you to everyone who attended tonight. We are dismissed.